You should be here.
The mayor's online?
The mayor's online, but yeah. The mayor's online, Will is on, uh, council president Anderson's online. So because they are not in the room, the council president Anderson asked Councilor Cozner to start when we go on air. So many moving parts.
On air? Hi, we're on air. Welcome, everyone. We do have the mayor and the council president on Zoom with us. Uh, council president will be here present shortly. Will be here present shortly. Uh, we'll go ahead and start the work session.
Okay, great. Well, thanks, everybody. Thanks for having us back. Uh, we started this work session March 18th, I think we did. We got through half of the PowerPoint presentation. So the idea for tonight is just to pick off where we left off last time. Um, so that's what we're gonna do. So we're gonna move straight into the functional classification. And I think Ryan is gonna take us through that to start. And then it's me, and you all met Matt last time from Hillson.
Hello.
Hello. Cool. Yeah, so I'll dive in, um, to the functional classification. So this, uh, you probably saw the memo, um, but just to give you some background, this really came out of, uh, some challenges that we were having internally talking about, uh, greenways. Um, and so, uh, really this idea that greenways, um, meant a lot of different things to different people, um, and trying to get clear internally about what we were talking about so that we could also be clear with our community, um, about what we mean when we say greenway. Um, and really, I think a lot of the tension was about this idea that greenways, neighborhood greenways, is this, uh, the way our existing TSP recognizes them is as this like toolbox of interventions, uh, that you might apply on low volume, low speed, uh, roadways that are sort of, you know, identified as being friendly for cyclists. And what are some interventions that might keep those facilities functioning in that way? Um, and then also thinking about greenways. So there's that idea as this like toolbox of interventions. And then there's also this idea that greenways were kind of our, um, our, our, our network for bicycles, um, across the entire city, our, our sort of the routes that we had identified, um, as being, uh, friendly for cyclists. And there's obviously some overlap, um, there between those ideas, but they're not always exactly the same. And I think the Monroe Greenway really illustrates that in a, in an interesting way, um, because of its, it travels through, uh, so many different sort of types of land use and transportation environments, you know, starting on sort of in the, in the eastern part of the city, um, which is predominantly, you know, around Linwood is predominantly a sort of, um, low density residential setting. Uh, the traffic volumes are really low, uh, speeds are really low. Um, but then as you sort of travel to the east towards downtown, um, Monroe, you know, we start to see especially around, you know, Milwaukee Marketplace, uh, higher volumes. We see some higher speeds around 224. Um, the land use context changes. It's no longer sort of this load into the residential, um, land use pattern that you see. It's more of a, um, a commercial environment. Uh, and so the, the interventions that you might use, you know, in the eastern part of the city, um, to sort of preserve that bicycle friendliness are different than what you might see, um, I think in the, the western, um, part of the Monroe Greenway segment. Uh, and so we were, we were kind of struggling about this, uh, you know, struggling with this idea of like, well, is, is our greenways, is it this collection of, of, of tools and interventions? Um, or is it the route itself? Or what are we really talking about here? Um, and so we asked Matt and his team, like, can you help us? Like, we have a lot of ideas. Can you help us like start to think and talk clearly about this? Um, and what, you know, Matt and his team recommended to us is like, well, why don't you, what some other cities have done, um, what some of the new state administrative rules are sort of recommending the cities might do is start to think about, um, this as a functional classification. Um, and so you might be familiar with our current functional classification that we have for autos, you know, our system of arterials, collectors, neighborhood routes and local streets. Uh, and that, and that's an idea that has been in transportation planning for a long time. Um, the idea is basically that each of those facility, types of facilities is serving a role within this larger network of streets, you know, with arterials accommodating the largest number of vehicles, um, and local streets really providing a lot of access to local properties, um, and recognizing that there's kind of a trade-off between those things. If you want automobiles to keep moving, you kind of want to limit access to adjacent properties so that people can keep going, um, versus local streets is gonna be slower and you're gonna provide a lot of access to individual houses, um, for example. So, uh, what, what we've kind of done here is, is taken that idea and said like, let's, let's apply that to other modes of transportation beyond just automobiles, um, so that we can, uh, speak a little bit more clearly and start to think a little bit more clearly about what role different roads are playing within the larger network for our pedestrian system or for our bicycle system or for transit. Um, and so that was kind of the origin of this. Um, and I think really what this boils down to is just like two components. It's the system of maps, um, that you see, starting here with the pedestrian classifications. And then if you look closely at the memo, um, at the, towards the back end of it, um, is, uh, basically each, uh, facility type within the functional classification for peds, for bikes, for transit, um, and a description of the role that that facility type plays within the larger network for that mode of transportation. Um, and, and so it's, it's giving staff, uh, a bit of guidance about how we might want to think about, uh, applying treatments to those different types of facilities, the role it's playing within the larger network, what are, to a concept that we introduced last time, the LTS, the level of traffic stress, what we might want to shoot for, you know, where our highest function, um, of, uh, pedestrian facility, our, you know, our major city walkways, these are facilities, for example, we might want, that we would be wanting to design to accommodate the largest number of people walking. So you'll see on the map here that, you know, our, some of our major roads downtown, uh, some of our major, um, north-south routes, east-west, east-west routes, um, such as, uh, 32nd or Monroe, that, you know, we recognize that those be largely because of their sort of continuous nature throughout the city, that those are routes that people are gonna choose to get from point A to B across the entire city. And that we wanna design those facilities to accommodate the largest number of people walking. And we also want them to be comfortable. Um, so it's really, I think if you wanna, uh, you know, dig into this afterwards, I think sort of comparing the maps to those descriptions, um, uh, of the different facility types is the, is the best way to really get a, a full picture of, of what we're talking about here. Um, but yeah, so we've, so we've created one of these for each mode of transportation considered in the TSP. So there's a pedestrian map, uh, there's a bicycle, uh, functional class, um, there's transit, uh, there's freights, and then we'll still maintain, none of these are replacing the functional classification that we have for automobiles, um, they're just accompanying them, um, recognizing and as well that, you know, each of these modes of transportation has different needs. Um, and so we wanna, and, and so really you can kind of think of this as route planning as well. Um, so with that, I, I'll, I guess I'll just kind of stop and open it up for questions and discussion.
Look, I do have a question, and then I, I like, this is, this report is very good. It's very data dense. There's a lot of stuff in here. And, uh, I, I, I like it that it's broken out by, you know, the different modes of freight and pedestrian and like that. But do we miss something by not doing some sort of overlay to see where the conflicts are?
Yeah, I think that that is something that we have, uh, has been brought up a couple of times, um, that, yeah, where are there inherent conflicts between these different modes and something that we have tried to consider, um, and to the, you know, to the extent that we can. Um, but, uh, I mean, I think that you, and I will say that we made sort of deliberate choices about assigning different classifications to different roadways based on that idea. So, um, you'll see, you know, just like thinking about our bike classification map, for example, um, you know, we went back and forth with, uh, is 32nd, should it be designated as a major city bikeway? Um, you know, there are reasons why you might want to do that. You know, it is a, it's a great north-south connector, uh, it's, you know, it's got our sort of neighborhood mixed-use zoning, recognizing that a lot of people might want to, you know, access some of those properties over time by bicycle. However, we also know it's a, it's a constrained right-of-way. Um, and we know that 29th runs just parallel, um, to, uh, 32nd and is a route that we have identified in our TSP as a major sort of bicycle facility for a long time. And so, uh, recognizing that there might be a conflict in the future, um, about, you know, the constrained right-of-way there, we were like, I think that probably, you know, 29th is going to serve a lot of the same need that 32nd would, um, if it were to be designated a major city bikeway. Um, and so that's, we've tried to, I think throughout these classifications, sort of recognize like where there might be a parallel route, and is that route serving the same basic function? And are we avoiding future conflicts, um, by designating one for, um, bikes? But for the pedestrian map, you know, we are still showing 32nd as a, a major city walkway because again, there is that sort of mixed-use zoning, um, and we, we know that, you know, a facility that a lot of people, um, it's important for people to be able to walk on, um, safely, comfortably. Um, is that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, I, I, maybe conflict was too strong a term. Maybe tension is better. Um, and the only point I'm making is if we haven't done an overlay, then we're missing some of the obvious. I, I don't know if there's any conflict or tension in any of this.
Yeah.
Uh, but I just, if we don't sanity check, like doing the overlay is to say, oh, this could be a problem. I don't know.
And I think partially it'll, it'll help when we do the project design, right? Because when you get in and say you're gonna do like, I mean, when you're looking at Monroe, you're thinking about all the different things that are happening on Monroe and you're designing that appropriately. So like where cars might be, you know, the street narrows and it widens. And, and so there's different treatments throughout Monroe, trying to get at some of those inherent conflicts. And I think that that's what we would do or what Jen's team would do when you go through and you do the actual design of the project, knowing that you're gonna have to make a little bit of trade-offs on the things.
Okay, I'm good. Jen is the conflict remover.
I'd also say, you know, you're starting to create a project list now and we're getting ready to present those. And we are linking like the bike and the peds and where they connect. So there is some connection happening at the product level. And so I think you gotta, you gotta allow that to flush out a little bit. And, uh...
And it might even help with project prioritization. I like, think of the Harmony Railroad intersection, which I'm sure shows up on almost all of these functional classification maps. There's a lot of potential conflict or tension there that we're already experiencing. So how do we design something that...
There's intersection conflicts and it's for cars and it's for the people and it's for the bikes. And so what does that project ultimately look like?
Yeah.
I would say from a city engineer's perspective, the most that we're lacking is the bike and the ped. From a traffic standpoint, our roads are there, people can get by, but bikes and peds have the hardest time getting around, or transit, even having access, good access to get to transit.
Is the railroad considered part of freight? Or is it not at all?
Road has this, it's in, um... It's usually on break.
Yeah.
Yeah, the dirt line.
Okay.
Yeah, I think another place where you will see this, uh, come up is when we come back to you, um, with, uh, projects, um, that, you know, as we have been sort of identifying, um, significant gaps in the system, um, gaps along these routes, uh, for bikes or for peds are sort of the ones that we are, you know, looking at as like, yeah, those are, those are really important gaps to try to, to try to resolve. Uh, because we are saying in this map that this is a really important facility, uh, for our bicycle network, for our pedestrian network. Um, yeah.
I have a question. Unless, did you have more? Uh, I have a question about certain areas where we just know that the stress is going to be greater for folks. And there is that overlay, like, one of the spaces that I'm looking at is where Johnson Creek kind of jogs, um, around that corner, um, just, just around 42nd. Um, I live in that neighborhood and traffic is usually really backed up. And there are sidewalks, so that's helpful, you know, for folks that are walking. But biking is a little challenging until you get onto the spring water. And I noticed that the lines for freight, you know, just kind of stops there. And I don't know if that's because then freight is going up into Portland and that's a different jurisdiction or if, you know, so I guess I'm wondering, like, where are the nodes of conflict that you think, um, we might need to be able to plan for in the future?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do have those nodes of conflicts on earlier maps. We've identified those nodes where there's intersections that are problematic.
Yeah.
And you will see those translated into the project list. We're working on that right now. Um, so you will see kind of projects. And then with that one in particular, 42nd, it is, since it is out of our jurisdiction, that particular section, but we want to be able to say to Portland, this is a problem. We need to be able to do something with that. So we've identified it on our projects, uh, project list.
And how, how does that work in conversation with Portland as they are going through their TSP? And I'm thinking about some of the policy committees that have been started up with the new city council. Um, and so, you know, I think in the earlier stages, they wanted to make sure that they had subject matter expertise as part of those committees. And I'm wondering around transportation, if there's a way that you're already connected to transportation staff within Portland that have been staffing those policy committees, they're going to determine the funding and the priority for their project.
Yeah, that's a good question because we are, we have Blackman's County on our technical committee, but we don't, and we haven't sat down with anyone there yet and said, hey, this, we, we need to talk to you like about what our overlay, overlaying, uh, issues are so that we can be sure that you all are having these conversations at that level. But we haven't done that yet, but yes, we should do that.
Has started between engineering and public works. So we've had a meeting on Ochopo, um, because we own half of that street. Um, there's also another, um, Roswell, we own half of that street, right? So we're starting to actually, um, meet the people that we should be talking to and having conversations. And if there were need to move on a few things, we need to identify money for on our end in order to like move on, you know, our side. So, but we are starting to have those conversations.
That's good to know. So, yeah, so that's good that that connection has been made.
Okay, yeah, that's helpful.
And to close the loop on the question about jurisdiction and whether or not we've designated a, a functional classification, um, we, there are some inconsistencies in these maps as we've gone through the different process with our AC and our TC, uh, bringing it to the PC. We've, we've kind of waited on some of these updates to, to sort of get a final...
Level learners, right?
Yes. We, we, as we take it into the committees, uh, we have sort of not, uh, we've not incorporated all of the feedback into final maps, but I know what, so I guess one thing, so council mastic to your point about the railroad, um, it's not shown on the freight map, but we did, but we have a more recent version than what's in this presentation and we have designated it, um, as a, a, a major freight facility, um, also recognizing the possibility of high-speed rail potentially coming, um, through, uh, using that track. Um, but then, uh, yeah, there is some inconsistency on what, where we have designated, um, facilities based on jurisdiction, like Lynnwood, for example, you know, north of King is actually in Blackman's County, but we're showing it designated, but we're not showing Johnson Creek designated. Um, so we need, we are aware of some of those inconsistencies and have had, generally, I think our move has been not necessarily to designate, uh, or to try to identify those facilities since we don't have a lot of control over them. Um, but yeah, there's, there's some issues with the maps, but...
Well, I appreciate you paying attention to those issues because sometimes the borders of all of our jurisdictions become this forgotten border where it's like, I don't know, Milwaukee probably hasn't covered and then, oh, Portland probably hasn't covered. Then it takes some crisis or, you know, huge issue to like bring together working solutions, you know, to like bring everybody together. So I'm glad that it's on, on your radar.
I wish they told us when they were paving Johnson Creek because we would have had them keep going through our section and had that at least piece done.
Yeah.
But no, they did not. So, but so we're try, we're talking now.
It looks like Mary's hands up.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. I guess on this map, I, um, had just a clarifying question about, um, I mean, you've explained why the little, uh, little bit of maroon on, um, Johnson Creek Boulevard doesn't extend into Portland, but the fact that it is a regional transit way only on one part and then designated as a lesser transit access street on another part, can you explain why that?
Yeah, that is because of where, um, frequent transit currently runs, uh, coming down, I think, uh, 45th there, I think it's the 75, um, comes down and then it's JCP. It does not run down that, uh, sort of eastern segment of transportation. Yeah, some of this was aligning with, you know, where transit is currently provided.
Well, I think one, one more step with that is there's a little projection going on here as well.
Yeah.
Um, if you back up to the, one of the bike or ped maps, you'll see that railroad is shown as a major, um, city bikeway, but it has no accommodations for, okay, we know it will in the foreseeable future. So we've projected that forward, um, knowing that it's gonna have better facilities. Same with the transit, we've projected some of the designation of those routes under the, understanding that Metro and TriMet, looking forward in the future have already designated or planned for those corridors to have better transit service going forward. So we've adjusted the line where preemptively to account for that.
It's an aspirational map, not a current condition map.
It's doing a little bit of both. It's both reflecting...
I was gonna say, it sounds like it's not consistent. Yeah.
Well, it's trying to do both, I think. You know, we're recognizing that like there is, there is good transit service here. Like this, this is a major, uh, you know, transit way, uh, but also trying to signal to our partners and, and also have an understanding internally that like in the future, this is something that happens with intense service. So it's, it's kind of trying to do both things, I think intentionally.
My other, um, sorry. Um, my other sort of bigger policy question was I noticed that the, um, the different classifications for bikes, you had the desired goal as level of stress one, but for pedestrians, you only had the first, and, and that applied to all the levels. And for pedestrians, you only had the first, the highest classification as level of stress one. What's the rationale for a difference?
Yeah, good, good, good question. The, the rationale is when we had initially brought this, uh, the level of sort of, um, black, level of traffic stress concepts to our advisory committee, um, we had, uh, you know, this was again, sort of a balance between recognizing existing conditions and challenges and also balancing that with our aspirations. Um, and so for, for our bicycle system, we were finding that, uh, in, in a lot of cases, because of existing volumes and speed limits, achieving a BLTS one, um, was gonna be fairly realistic. Uh, for our, our ped system, it seemed like achieving because of what's required, how much right-of-way is required, um, you know, needing the, your five-foot, six-foot sidewalks and your vegetated buffer, um, and low volumes, that there was a, a lot more required and it was going to be, you know, were we setting ourselves up for, um, for failure if we were adopting a PLTS one target, uh, citywide? And the way we had initially started talking about it was sort of establishing citywide targets. I think what this functional classification, um, kind of allowed us to do is like, well, maybe for these higher classification facilities for our ped system, you know, there's an inherent recognition that these are really important for people walking. Maybe we do want to shoot for a higher level of, um, or a lower level of stress, I guess, uh, for those facilities. Um, so this gave us an opportunity to, uh, so we initially identified, uh, PLTS two as the target. This gave us a second, a second opportunity to sort of, uh, maybe have, add some nuance to the way that we were thinking about this and say, these are important facilities. We want to shoot for PLTS one here, even if it's gonna be really hard.
Well, so I'm concerned about the concept that we're, you know, we're, I mean, well, I guess I feel like we're inconsistent in how we talk about this as aspirational versus what's realistically fundable or what's realistically buildable. Um, and second, I guess I'm worried that we are, uh, looking out more for bikes than pedestrians. And, um, uh, and one of the things I think you guys said last time when we talked about PLTS one was, um, that it was, uh, for example, a curbed tight sidewalk did not really qualify as PLTS one. Um, and that's what we have on 32nd Avenue, right? Um, so I guess I'm just feeling like, yeah, those are my concerns.
And I've got, if you look at 46, it, it has a good image of what PLTS one is and kind of low lines getting out wide and maybe hard to do in a lot of spots. Um, here's a good example. So Lake Road, um, on the side of Lake Road, uh, it right now is a BLTS two. It has bike lanes, but you still have high-traffic streets. Um, if you threw, I imagine, some protectors along some of the little bollards, it would likely go to PLTS one. It, it's pretty easy to do that intervention here. Here's an example of taking a street that had a sidewalk into a PLTS one. It involves a buffer, a parking buffer, a green buffer, and a wide sidewalk. And so I think what staff is trying to get at is the gap between a PLTS one and a PLTS two is very different than a BLTS one versus PLTS two. So it's like kind of technical and greedy, but I think for the majority of folks, if you're walking on a sidewalk that is a fairly wide sidewalk, you're gonna feel pretty happy and safe. And that's a PLTS two. For a majority of folks, if you're biking along the side of the street with a lot of traffic and you're not feeling protected, that's a little less comfortable. And so we're trying to hit you to that, like, feeling of a little bit more separation. So I think in the end, the numbers might be different, but the lived experience of like comfort using the system should be the same.
Yeah. Yeah, I do feel like it is a little bit apples and oranges to compare between the bicycle and the pedestrian level of traffic stress.
Well, I, um, I will say, I think there are, like this Roswell is a perfect picture of a place where I don't, I do think there's a level of stress for pedestrians along there. Um, not to say nothing of the obstacles for people who need ADA accessibility, but just a regular pedestrian, there's definitely a level of stress there. I hear stress, I know people who won't stand at the light at River Road and McLaughlin because a woman lost her legs there in a car accident. And they feel like that is way, that the way the trolley trail brings, uh, pedestrians and bikes to that light, um, is unsafe. I knew someone with a, with his kids in a stroller and he would go back around and go on the trolley trail, sort of the back way, just to avoid coming to that intersection. Um, so, yeah, I, I guess I feel like the descriptors of the levels of stress, um, when I looked at them for our March meeting, um, I, I didn't see the distinction you're drawing between the pedestrian and the bicycle. Um, so, uh, and the level of stress, the distinction between one and two, and the two seemed fairly consistent to me.
Yeah. I guess I'll add on and just say that, yeah, we definitely did not intend or do not intend to, uh, you know, discount or pedestrians in this, uh, in our approach here. Um, and I think sort of, you know, when we initially started talking about this, our, our real aspiration is always to hit a one, if that is possible for both bicycles and, and pedestrians. If we can hit a one, that's, that's what we're shooting for. I think the, the goals that we've sort of were establishing in the TSP, and I, I think again, um, you know, when we had this conversation, um, you know, last month, I think we, we were, we were, to an extent, we were trying to, these new... you know, last month, I think we, we were, to an extent, we were trying to, these new rules are new. We are sort of building this thing as we're applying it. I think the exact way that the threshold targets for level of traffic stress work, the role that they play in the TSP and sort of the reporting that we might be involved in with Metro into the state, around those performance metrics is still something that is being fleshed out to an extent. So I think as we were discussing this, we, we also didn't want to, you know, while we want to create the best facilities possible, we didn't want to set up a situation which, you know, we were asked to report on our progress on these things and we had just, we set ourselves up to fail because there was, you know, it was going to be prohibitively expensive for us to create a PLTS one on some of these facilities. And so that's kind of why we had, we had settled there. But it's, it is challenging and, yeah, because we don't want to be signaling to people that we don't care about permits, so.
I would just also add, Mayor, we, a majority of the projects we've done through our SAFE program were currently not hitting a one. And so that means all of those projects would be put back on the list to become, in order to get to a classification of one, if we wanted to have everything at a one. And the reason why we weren't trying, wasn't that we weren't, didn't want to get to a one. We didn't have the actual right of way to achieve a one on those projects. So we either got to put a lot more money in to pay for right of way, or we look at a target of two for pedestrians and with the possibility, trying to achieve a one in places where we can, where we have the right of way.
Why wouldn't you put in one as the goal and then with a big asterisk by it that says where right of way permits? Or, you know, yeah, something like that. I mean, to just automatically default to two. Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, it doesn't sit very well with me.
Take a shot at that, an answer to that. It may not be totally satisfactory, but I guess if you look at Milwaukee in totality, your ability to get to PLTS one, let's just use Roswell as an example here. That sidewalk that's on the south side shown in the image there, that's a five-ish foot sidewalk, almost, give or take a little bit. If you removed all of those pedestrian barriers, the mailboxes and the utility poles, that thing would be a PLTS two. You do nothing more than remove the utilities on there and you get a PLTS two. And I'd hazard a guess that most pedestrians on that sidewalk would feel fairly comfortable, given its width and the volume of traffic on Roswell and the speed and other things. If you wanted to get to a PLTS one, you'd have to remove those obstacles and you'd have to rebuild, tear the entire sidewalk apart and get it to a six foot sidewalk and then put a buffer on that, right? And I'd say the vast majority of Milwaukee, you just can't do that. Even if you made it aspirational, the circumstances in your built environment and with a few rare exceptions, don't even allow you to move in that direction. So that's just a more sort of a realistic spin on this. I'm not saying it's perfect and it's right, but that's where you stand if you look at your network in totality.
Yeah. I, what the mayor was saying is similar to what Joseph Edge said in our discussion about this. And I do think, is there some asterisk or some kind of where possible PLTS one comment you could, you could make? With the understanding that PLTS two might just be a realistic goal. The other point that I think the mayor was making that I really value, Grunberg Park would probably be a PLTS one. The trolley trail would probably be PLTS one, but that intersection of River Road and the trolley trail does not feel like a PLTS one. And so I would just be curious, as you're also looking at this, intersections themselves, how they fit in the PLTS system? Because there are some routes that are all PLTS, low stress, but that intersection does create a stress moment.
We recognize that that is the case and I don't, I don't think we're going to fix it on these classification maps, but we do have those intersections that people have identified and we've identified as problematic and they are on the project list, even if they're not kind of reflected in the classification maps or the PLTS maps as a whole. And that intersection is in the regional transportation plan.
Yeah, and I will, I will just note that I do, I do acknowledge that we have a tension, you know, we have the right of way constraints. We also will have more parking, on-street parking demand as we don't require, as we have more middle housing and aren't requiring off-street parking for it. So I do think, but like one of the things that would make me seem like an easy thing to do, that we don't have to build anything here on Roswell, is move the parking to the other side. I would be happier as a pedestrian if I was, had the parking between me and the cars and the buses going up Roswell. I would feel more comfortable. It seems to me it's kind of crazy that the parking is all, parking isn't allowed where the sidewalk is and is allowed on the other side. We shouldn't be using the parking as a buffer for pedestrians.
Well, maybe if we ever get to that, we can think about this considering.
We've got 20 minutes left. We've got the slides. Counselor Coasterbody, you've said nothing so far. So you want to jump on any of this or you could keep?
I want to keep going first, yeah.
I can go back to, to see other maps. I think it was really, it was open if we wanted to just, I don't know if you want to walk through each map or?
We've only got 20 minutes left, so let's just keep on going.
Keep going, okay.
Could, if people have concerns about any maps, maybe they could email you a specific?
For sure.
Yeah, these are still proposed. We won't finalize anything until we get to a draft state of 15.
Yeah, we've got time to take more comments.
Great.
Okay. Want me to take this one? Yeah, so I guess we're already there. Tomorrow, we're meeting with our technical committee and then Thursday, our advisory committee, about what's going on in this next slide, is how does it all fit together? So we've been doing all this needs and gaps analysis. We've identified where we know we've got some constraints. We've identified where we have limitations towards these target PLTS, the PLTS targets. We know where past planning projects have identified opportunities or needs. So really, at this point, now's the fun part. Now we get to come up with some solutions. So taking all these tools that we've developed and these, and this information, we're in the step of developing an unconstrained project list. And that's taken some time, as you can imagine. We're meeting tomorrow and Thursday to go over just the bike and ped projects. We have over 200 total projects, at least in those two modes together, to weigh and evaluate and make sense of. So that's part of what we're going to be sharing tomorrow and then we're going to come back in the following month and go through all the other modes. So rail, freight, intersections, roadway segments, transit. So as part of that process, that involves the identification of a project to fill that need. It involves an evaluation of that project against our goals and objectives and then coming up with a cost estimate to identify what it's going to take to fulfill that. And then ultimately, after kind of going through all that, we'll be sitting down to sort of prioritize and develop a draft constrained, an unconstrained list of projects that will eventually feed into the initial draft of the TSP. So that's where we stand, but up to this point, we've just been, really been developing a lot of tools and guidance. Now we're in the steps of actually developing solutions and projects.
Yeah, and just if you, if you want a sneak peek of those, those are posted online right now under the advisory committee meeting, so you can see all the projects. But we are also tentatively scheduled to come back to you all on June 3rd to start going through the projects.
Curious how, you know, does this unconstrained project list, does it have a start date and an ending? Or maybe not a date, but I mean, is it, is it 10 years? Is it 20 years? Is it 30 years?
One-year plan, but even in our last TSP, we didn't get through all of those lots. So it is, is more than what we can do, for sure. Yeah.
I don't think we would put a defined year date on these. We would then, I was more concerned about the length. I think they get categorized more along the lines of priority and hopefully priority translates into near term. But it doesn't mean that you're blocked into those, those definitions either. So as money becomes available, as grant funding or other things are, is awarded and sought after, some of those unconstrained project lists can move up into priority projects.
Well, that's just a waiver and, you know, if you have projects and you commit to, you know, completing in the first three years, then that's a forcing function to try to at least keep you on track. And it's just not sort of, well, kind of going fairly along, you know, on ourselves account.
Yeah, and kind of the way it'll work is that these projects, where on the constrained project list, will get moved into the CIP. So that's right. That's, that's the mechanism for taking it. It goes straight to the CIP. So whatever's prioritized, we move and then we know it's on the two-year cycle.
And then the remaining SAFE projects are all being added to this as well. I am trying to put an identifier that, hey, this is a SAFE, that was identified in the nine-year plan that hasn't been completed yet. So anything that's under construction won't be in there, but anything that's hasn't been. And that is not in the CIP, that's not in our current CIP approved to move forward, is and will be on this TSP list.
And it is in the project list now and it says SAFE project in red, so you can see.
There was a few projects we tried to cut and we had to bring them back because I'm like, oh, those are SAFE projects. I just hadn't seen them yet. I'm like, oh, okay.
But the benefit of having the comprehensive approach and inclusive project lists is that if grant opportunities do arise, that we can, we've identified the issue. Even if it's not, we can't realistically bump it within this time period. Mayor Beatty stands up.
Mayor Beatty, you're muted.
Okay, thank you. I was curious as to whether you took the 2007 project list and did a, these are done, these are not done breakdown? Maybe you did that for the advisory committee early on. I don't remember seeing that, but I'd love to see that if you've done it. And then I guess, yeah, I mean, I think there will be aspirational things, there should be aspirational things in here and there should be things that we can't carry the whole lift on that are more regional projects into that. And I shared with everyone an email a few days ago about the Harmony Road crossing. I do think that, you know, for, since 2007 and before, we've been calling for grade separation there. It's a huge project. Wouldn't be the cities alone, but at whatever point, we have leverage with the railroads or with the state on, you know, sort of enhancement to the railroad lines. We should keep that in our list of things. And I had one other, that's a big project. I had one other very small project I wanted to sort of put on your radar screen, which is a crosswalk on 37th in front of Minthorne. So I read, I went back and looked at all the maps that are in the package about accident sites, which I really appreciated having that data. And 37th Avenue has not really had accidents except at the crossing of the railroad or at 224. And I was pleasantly surprised to see that because I will tell you that people go awfully darn fast up 37th Avenue, having been out there working along the frontage of Minthorne Springs. I can tell you, there are some people going at pretty fast speeds for six years now. Volunteers have been working in Minthorne 10 months out of the year. It is our best natural area. We've made parks and green spaces a, a goal. And while it's not the city's property, it is the absolute best natural area in our city in terms of habitat for wildlife. And we want more people to go there. We want more eyes on it. So I do think putting a crosswalk on 37th Avenue should be something we add to a project list. And I do know that, from talking to Jennifer, I know that someday 37th comes up as a SAFE project and there's some thought of a, of narrowing and perhaps a sidewalk on that side. But I know that's going to be many years out and it does seem to me like there is a sidewalk on the Milwaukee Marketplace side. And so just having a crosswalk would be an, an important addition to pedestrian safety.
Where are you trying to put the crossing?
To the, where the pedestrian entrance to Minthorne is, which is about, it's behind, probably the, it's about 150 feet, maybe north of the driveway out of Milwaukee Marketplace. So it's sort of behind, I don't know if it's behind Planet Fitness or it's behind Dollar Tree, but it's behind one of those cutting across. There's a pretty clear pedestrian entrance to Minthorne there and all the volunteers park at, at Milwaukee Marketplace and walk across there. And like I said, when anybody's trying to work in the, on the frontage there, it does not feel very safe. But, but I think, I mean, that's a occasional problem that I'm not saying we need to invest a lot of money in. But a crosswalk is a, is an important step toward getting people going there and using it and having better eyes on the area and having better appreciation of our best green space.
Thank you, Mayor Beatty. Your what's ahead of us, because they haven't gotten to the project list, but we're looking at the project list because we have it, so we can add that to the project list as we move through this, no problem.
Any other questions that people have about this process instead?
Is this the end?
Go one more.
Yeah, please.
Could I ask one last thing here? In a previous meeting, I don't remember, it might have been a budget committee, any meeting, Mayor Beatty talked about grouping projects where we do with our SPA program rapid blacking dates en masse or like pedestrian crossings en masse. And I would be curious what those projects would look like included in our TSP or something else. Yeah, one thought there. The second thought, to Counselor Massey's point about a realistic list that we show the people. I know we're going to continue to talk about the SAFE program and some of the fiscal challenges there. And I think the timing is kind of fortuitous for us to, if we do need to tweak the SAFE program. Let's see, we'd say, or edited, four in the road. Here's a realistic list of projects that we can do with our fiscal constraints. And if you wanted to do an expanded list of projects, here's what this would be. But timing, I ask for a potential like option to the city that we present with the completion of the TSP, I think, is a good way for us to have different ways forward. And I think it is fair to give the voters, give them the choice of what type of. Some folks might want a more limited one, some folks might want a more expanded one.
Yeah, and that'll be on a funding type of deal, but not address probably the TSP, right? So we'll, I will be working on that piece for you as far as that goes, once we get this drafted and we have those lists of projects.
Well, those comments sort of triggered me to something I wanted to talk about, so I'm going to jump on, is that, you know, there's a lot of good work here. This has been going on for two years. It's been a long time getting going, but we've really got some good news going here. And it is pretty positive. I would like to tell the citizens in some vein what's going on and where our priorities are and maybe we've told, you know, that, you know, the priorities in some way. We can't enter this report and, you know, and I don't know what, all the different ways that we can communicate this to. But I think that it's, it's worth doing. And there could be many, any day, we need to be, open house, it could be pilot articles. I just kind of throw it out there that I, I mean, all this good work is one thing, but you don't have all the relevance of how good work.
Counselor Massey, I couldn't agree more. And I think you've talked about internally, you know, we're about, it's hard to believe, but about a year out from having to adopt our next budget and our next two-year CIP. but about a year out from having to adopt our next budget and our next two-year CIP as part of that budget. There's going to be a lot that looks different in this CIP development process than last time. We're going to have an updated TSP, we're going to have new evaluation criteria, both on the individual system plan level, but also for the whole CIP. We are definitely thinking about how we demystify that whole process to the community so that they understand how the city passed away, you know, water projects versus transportation projects. Where we are statutorily or right, we're by regulation required to do work versus where we have some discretion. And to kind of tie it to what you said, Council President, I think you're right, there's, there's sort of this conversation with the community about what you want. But what's interesting with the SAFE program is it's funded by a utility fee rate that you all set. So I think that I'll also be looking to you, you know, we'll, we'll do that education and that communication with the constituents. But, you know, I'd like your help in getting folks to tune in to this conversation and come talk to you as decision makers about our budget and about our fee set schedule. Because that's where a lot of these policy trade-offs actually have to get answered.
Agreed.
I do. I guess my last thought on this is we have a lot of things that we aspirationally want to fund in the city that we as five policymakers might think are really beneficial. I don't think it's a bad thing to ask a question to voters and for them to tell us, no, to tell us yes. It's a form of participatory, we do a lot of that. If you want better streets, we have to pay for it. It's our food, I'm excited to be, if you want to pay for it, or if you want better leads, that's a new topic. But I do think that we need to see this culture, asking this question, allowing our citizens to weigh. I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing. But you've got a last slide.
Okay, yeah, I think glossed over it a little bit when I described the next step. So the evaluation criteria that we have come up with for this project is an offshoot from the goals and policy work that was done in the very onset of the project. So these boxes on the screen here hit the basic high-level subject matter that will go into the evaluation criteria. Essentially every project we come up with, whether it's that Roswell example we were pointing out earlier or another project on 37th Crosswalk. Every one of those projects will be evaluated according to these valuation criteria. And that criteria is going to help us sort of weigh these projects against each other and ultimately help us prioritize. So the project that goes through this rig roll here, this is the depth of assessment that's going to go into each of these projects represented by these three sheets. They'll have a score, a numerical score weighted to these criteria. And we'll be able to use that to say, all right, what are the highest scoring projects? You know, within each of these different modal categories. And doesn't mean that we're going to select the highest scoring, those become the prioritized projects, but it's going to help us weigh through the massive information that we've got for us to identify. At least ones that numerically pop out more than others. And at that point, I don't think we have any more to share.
Yeah, the only thing I'll add to this is just, just to stress what the mayor pointed out. Because I do see, I understand the difference with the, what you were explaining, how the difference from BLTS and PLTS is different, is a lot different, right? It's smaller between the PLTS two to one and BLTS two to one. But when I look at one of these maps, I do see, you know, when you look at the bike, there's a lot around the city that is BLTS one quite a bit. When you look at the pads, I mean, there's so much of it that's no sidewalk or nothing. And then when you look around schools, same thing. There's not a lot of, and I get we have the safe routes and those, that funding and all that. But what I'm getting at, you know, and then you look at the neighborhood hubs too. There's not a lot of pedestrian connectivity there or infrastructure there or even feeling safe. So equity is going to be big in making sure that we don't play heavy handed to one over the other. Because by looking at the maps, it looks like one's in a lot worse condition, in my opinion. So I do want to stress that. And that the criteria and that evaluation process and process and how we prioritize is going to be extremely important. Because we're not going to be able to finish everything. We're going to have a huge list of projects. But we have to be realistic about it too. And that's why that prioritization phase is, prioritization phase is going to be huge on us to figure that out. But I do see a need for a lot more pedestrian-based projects, just in looking at the maps.
And there's a lot more project, pedestrian projects on the list than there is bike. So it's, that is reflective in the actual list when you'll see coming up.
I'd say having to open these maps a lot on the committee, you see a road that's like low stress, has no sidewalks, 29th is a good example. 29th would be a bike level one because it doesn't need any infrastructure changes. But it would be, it would need serious infrastructure changes to get it to pedestrian level one. And so I think the way I would think about this is across the city, there are a lot of interventions for pedestrians that we need to be doing. For bikes, there are specific corridors, specific connections, specific projects that need to be done. And so it's kind of, again, like what they were saying, apples and oranges. The pedestrian need looks very different than the bike need. But across the board, making sure that there's connectivity and a network people can use will be really important.
Yeah, I mean, but what's not apples and oranges is the funding. And what projects are going to be done first before others, right? And what's, what's a higher priority? That's, that's the one part that's not.
Okay, I can be quick. The, I wanted to go back to the evaluation thing because we didn't really, I think it looked cool. I mean, I thought it was really thoughtful. I liked a lot about it. But I guess I assumed it was to be used for big projects and not necessarily for every little safe spot type project like a crosswalk on 37th. So, I mean, I feel like we shouldn't encumber, I mean, when we're talking about big dollars and big efforts, we need to do this level of evaluation. It seems to me there may be some smaller projects in the SAFE, in the SPOT program, for example, that don't need to have quite this level of evaluation.
Mayor just gave us permission to make our jobs easier, don't they?
We also kind of have to go through an evaluation. We have to go through that exercise so that we know what comes up to the top, be it small or big. Because small projects are important. If it's a school project that's right around a school, it's next to a neighborhood hub and it's only a little small project, it still might be important connection in the overall larger map of the classification, so.
I wondered to Council President's point earlier, you know, the mayor had brought up, this was back in a study session where we heard from our Public Safety Advisory Committee about this, and the mayor had this idea of for SPOT program, the future of the SPOT program, does it kind of change a bit to be more, every year we pick a type of treatment and then we ask for SPOT applications related to that type of treatment? It's a very cool idea that we can explore. But I think, Council President, you were sort of saying, could a similar vein be taken to some small projects that are city-led, city-driven, but maybe bundle them a little bit more? So if it's, or crosswalks or something like that, to make it a bigger project from which to do the full evaluation thing?
Yeah, and I think that you will try to bundle things as much as you possibly can, right? When you look at projects.
Yeah, when I pull it together as far as that goes. But a good example, like another units in the SAFE program is ADA programs that are not compliant. Actually bring them up to compliance and that we have an address in this TSP. Like we should have a, that should be a bucket, that should be an item, like. So I still think we could maybe address some of Council President's idea of a couple bucket things that we might push off to the PZAC group to kind of help us.
It is, thank you for coming and I think you've heard.
Thank you.
Well, you're in mass, I can see it.
You can all cluster if you want, but you can also rotate in.
I'll get it out.
Go up. How did it go? I want the dog to sit next to me.
Yeah, yeah, you're front row though, it's time.
Yeah.
All right, well, our next work session item is going to be an update on our Houseless Services and Behavioral Health Outreach work. And I just want to give real credit to Dawn Holden. Dawn and I had lunch a couple weeks ago and it was Dawn who said to me, you know, it's been a little over a year since we had that last update to council where we shared a lot of statistics. And I think there's been a lot of change that's happened since then. And it's really a good time to check in, share some more of that information and highlight the amazing work that these wonderful individuals do for our community. So that's really the goal of tonight's presentation is just to highlight their awesome work and give a chance to council to ask questions and learn more, particularly about how we can best support the work that all these fabulous humans do. Over to you, Keith.
Okay, well, thanks, everybody. We appreciate it. This is just a kind of an update for some of the House's services. This is a team effort. There's a lot of people involved. The library, our PHU loved one, everyone's chipping in. There's additional people that are helping out with this, but it truly is a team effort. We're doing a ton of work. There are a lot of people in need, the variety of the clients. There's some people that are just struggling every day as they work but fall behind. There's people with mental health and then there's people that are houseless. And so what we'll do is we'll walk through some of this. Please be interactive. Ask us any questions you have. We'll be straight. So Randy with Love One and some of what you're doing in.
So Love One, I think most of you are familiar with us, but laundry, showers, hygiene, food, outreach, housing navigation, retention, food boxes for folks that we've housed. Deflection program is a new one for us. We partner with the district attorney's office and have two staff embedded with them, folks. So the, the recriminalization of small amounts of substances. Folks, depending on what the charges are and what their past history is, can go through deflection court and our folks work with them, get them connected to resources, support them at court and through that process. There's several variations on what that could look like, but that's kind of the high-level view of that. Been in, in our deputy district attorneys, we're in from today wildly successful. In fact, so much so that the team dedicated in the DA's office and our two staff are overwhelmed. And so there's going to be an effort to ensure that funding continues for that program and hopefully add some staff. But the difference in Clackamas County is that program is countywide, so it's touching every community. And in other areas, it is very different how that has been implemented. So arguably, Clackamas County is seeing more success and more engagement in that process. I generally always forget one program and this is worth putting something.
Biggest one I think to really touch base on too is the trash extravaganza and the ones we did here in the city.
Yes, so we've done several recent, we call them trash extravaganzas because if you call them trash cleanup events, people are like, oh, that's nice, good job. But if you call it an extravaganza, people are like, wait, what? And we're like, great, you want to come out and volunteer? And they're like, yeah, I got to check this out. What is this? And we really do, it is an extravaganza. We really do. We celebrate birthdays, anniversaries, any sort of whatever cupcakes and cleanup. We don't clear camps, but we go outreach teams, especially Dawn and Rita, go out and engage with folks, help them identify what it is they're ready to get rid of and/or abandoning camps. So we will clean those up. Do a lot of outreach and engagement, connecting to services and leave things better than we found them. Our outreach manager, we had the House meeting this afternoon and our outreach manager is looking for some additional places to have extravaganzas. And Dawn and Sergeant Smith had some ideas. You'll be seeing us around town, at least for two or three other locations. And then something we just started today in Oregon City that we would like to pilot also in Milwaukee is one of our outreach specialists pairs with two people with lived experience, identify with Love One vests on and walk around downtown, engage with folks who are out and about, also with business owners and pick up trash while they're at it. That came from concern from Oregon City regarding the caring place being built and the idea that if you build a bigger building, more people will come. And just needing to be more engaged with our downtown folks and be present. And so that, that was hugely successful today. Also be exploring other partnership.
It's incredibly busy up there. Today was a beautiful day, but just for example, we had three cases, significant mental health contacts, one safety hole. It just, the work is significant. So having all the partners, I think Clackamas County does a great job in making sure all their ships are sailing in the same direction. So Love One and MPD, that's Dawn and Rita, we got Glenn, our behavioral health, Randy, Captain Elkins, Captain Sherrigan. For the trash extravaganza, we had one just a little while ago, was that a month ago? Thereabouts wildly successful. We pulled a full dumpster out in a great partnership.
Yeah, that was a Cronberg Park and underneath the old walkway that goes along there. And that was involvement with Love One and our code enforcement around helped making sure it was safe because we could have the dumpster in there. It was a really great.
And I just really want to express extreme appreciation to Love One. The city is not equipped to do trash, I wasn't trying to make it a pun, but or a alliteration. Trash extravaganzas on our own. We just don't have the right equipment. We don't, our staff aren't often trained on the kind of the right like health and safety pieces. And so code enforcement is working hard to get a contract with Metro who can help more with that level of trash cleanup when needed. But contracting takes a long time. Love One stepped in right away, helped us do that at no cost and we did it super expeditiously. So thank you so much for helping make that happen.
Oh, yeah. Well, as you know, I'm a behavioral health specialist here. These are just some things to remember, you know, I think we're all in this together and we never want to forget that. I love Clackamas and I love the city of Milwaukee because we do it a little different here and we do it what's called the Clackamas way and we build bigger tables. It reminded me today as we had our Houseless meeting, I have one every month at the PD and I bring partners together to get to know each other, to get to those other resources. So whether it be toll probation, library, Love One, 4B Recovery, Auntie's Place, Clackamas Service Center, Kenny Bento, we're all in the same room, we're all talking, we're all getting to know each other. We have resources. And that I'm able to kind of give them an update of our mental health in our housed neighbors in Milwaukee, our neighbor struggle. And you can move to the next, next slide. I'm so happy because I'm a data nerd. I don't like to do data, but I like to have data. And with our new system, I share a document system called Dr. Cloud with its Milwaukee Behavioral Health, Oregon City, KMB, Malala and West Island Lake Oswego. All of us behavioral health specialists share the same document system. I love it because I can pull data from it. As you see up here, I, this is from March of last year to March of this year. I've been on scene with police eighty-nine times, without police twenty-seven times, which means like, okay, maybe the safety risk isn't as high and I can show up and kind of help de-escalate or really talk with the individuals. Mobile outreach just to, you know, whether it be a community partner referral or somebody's really struggling or Dawn's like, hey, this person, you know, is helpless and needs some behavioral health support. I'll show up on that. I did a hundred and fifty phone contacts and I did a hundred and forty-seven police report follow-ups. That's a lot of the times when I'm not around, I'll get the reports on my desk and I'll do a follow-up. I love to follow up with families if it's kiddos. So some of those will be multiple calls. Usually I start with the family when it's kiddos and then, you know, talk about if they have resources, are they connected? If there's a resource and every time I call a family member and even somebody that's struggling, they are like, what? The police station is following up? This is amazing, you know? So it really warms my heart and it warms my heart for the officers because they don't have time to do that. And then in office, yes, I do have people that come to the police station and say, where's Glenn? And that's been fourteen times. I've had a total of five hundred and nineteen interactions in a year. It's a lot. It's a lot. So that's kind of where we're at. I love it. It's never a dull moment. And today, he's right, today was a lot. Going from one to the next. Could be somebody just struggling with depression. Could be somebody that just wants to end their life now. Could be somebody that, you know, walked in front of a train. I mean, it's just, it's a whole nother world for me. And I guess I found my niche because I like to build relationships. That's what I do. People ask what I do for a living. I build relationships in the city of Milwaukee.
And to kind of follow on the points, one, we can also see in this doctor cloud, the other BHUs in the county. And we are so fortunate to have Glenn. His numbers are significantly higher. It's not necessarily about numbers, but it just shows also that he's always out working. Forty minutes ago, he was with some of our patrol staff helping out. And then the second point is it's new for the police department. Couple of years ago, we started stocking supplies. That's our supply locker, blankets, hand warmers, socks, hats, things like that. Food packs are the other thing. We used to work with a volunteer group to get food packs. Now we do it ourselves just because we were handing out too many. And it's a great starter to have maybe somebody in crisis and you hand them some food. And that's how you start your contact, even for a police officer, because sometimes that gets adversarial. And little did they know, there's an outreach card in that food pack. So they can meet up with Dawn.
It's as if we planned it.
And then I'll turn it over to Brent.
Great. And then I'm gonna feel free to jump in on any of the partners and Kelly. So the library, I really, when I had conversations with Dawn and Ryan and Kelly, like I think in some ways, the team of the library is so good. It's sort of transparent and seamless, the way in which they're sort of connecting. But we couldn't do it without like everyone else at the stable. And what, if we go onto the next slide, like here are the ways in which the library is supporting this effort. Dawn and I talked about this yesterday and so much of it is like this idea of like, it is the safe place for folks in need and everyone, really, right? It's almost like your office, right?
It's very much so.
Like Love One.
More time in that office than I do in the other.
You're the host for the community. You know, true. Yeah.
And we, and we, when we first started talking about this a couple of years ago, when Glenn was here and Dawn came on, we had this, we really worked together. We're like, hey, we're glad you're here. How do we make sure that this is like steady and steady? And we can like let people know where we're going to be here. And that's how this Tuesday outreach thing about was like, how do we let our staff know? How do we let the community know? Even the outreach cards, which you can all walk away with, was a product of like some library staff saying, let's put it together so we can like have this thing. So like, I just feel really good. But that Milwaukee way or that Clackamas way, like it's really evident that not every library or city has this kind of relationship. Our, some of this is like letting go of the control and like, you can get into this game of like who controls and who's going to do what. And that isn't what this team does. It's sort of like, hey, there's this thing, who can help us? And that's what this team has brought. Like library team gets to know people. We get to have those conversations. I would say we're sort of like triaging in some way. And then like sort of as you talked about, setting it up for the connection. So daily, you're hearing from us?
Yes.
And we're able to like sort of facilitate that connection. It's because of people like Kelly. Truly. Do you want to have anything?
No, I think it is truly a unique situation in Milwaukee and Clackamas and what the partnerships and just the relationships that we've been building is not an experience that I've had in other library systems that I've worked. And I do feel, you feel truly supported as staff and by everyone that we have that ability to say, okay, I can't help you right this moment because, you know, but I have the ability to let you know about Tuesday where I can maybe see if somebody will be available down the road. And then they know and they can come back to the library. So it's, it's really, it's a, it's a. As they always, it just takes a lot of people. And when you see how many people it takes to lift one person up, you realize how much of a challenge it is.
I would just add to that, so the library, your library staff are amazing. Like I don't, I don't know if y'all give a lot of kudos or not, like you should, because one of the things that they implemented is pit reports. And so when there's some interaction with an individual that rises to a level of, we need to document this, it automatically goes out to the PD, it goes out to Love One staff, library staff, I'm not sure who else, but.
People on this, some of the people on this.
Yeah, so it's, it's pretty much real time, like what, what is being seen? And if you, I don't know if anybody even knows, but Mother's Heart is the only day center in Clackamas County. They're open Monday through Friday. So the likelihood that someone having a tough time at the Milwaukee library is also receiving services at the only day center is pretty high. And to have us all looped in on the same communication, we can kind of monitor. And Oregon City does something similar. Their library staff do something similar. So when behaviors are escalating in the libraries, they're letting us know and we can gauge and interact with that person, provide some additional supports or reach out to say if they're connected with parole probation and like, hey, we need to re-engage. We need to do something else. This is, this, this level of behavior is not sustainable.
But even that level of collaboration is actually really, really amazing because of all of the reasons that maybe organizations wouldn't do it. Like core principles of library is like your right to privacy and like protecting that. So being able to like say like, hey, in the public health's interest in trying to like provide support and help our public, we need to be very transparent. And I think those of you working on the social services side, you have to be very respectful of privacy as well. So being able to like navigate that space.
Very carefully, yeah.
It's why like I think a lot of, a lot of social service organizations, libraries just don't even actually get to where they need to get, right?
Yep. Agreed.
That level of bad things like commitment and people to let go of ways. That library is really, really specific. And I myself, I'm Dawn Holden from House Today, so I'm really thankful to be here and I'm really thankful to have this job. When I was asked to do this job, I didn't understand like what this job would entail, but it's been held a lot. And the only way I've been able to do that is my chief, Glenn, Randy, Kelly, Brent. And I can take a whole list. So I'm going to try to keep it a little bit shorter because I want to share some stories about what, but this really means. So I really love and enjoy working with the library. When Brett was talking about getting the outreach support real time, it allows me also as an outreacher and individual trying to get resources to people in real time. Because if I'm not available, I have a huge human centered supportive. And that communication allows us to fill some of the gaps where individuals could easily get lost. And people can get lost from one date to another, you know, mental health, if they're hungry or whether they're trying to sleep at night. And that's something that somewhere to sleep at night is hopefully something that we will get to at some day. But right now we don't have that. So safety is big and I definitely want to express my love for the library as a person growing up in my life, a child of a lot. And the only place that I would ever go to was libraries. And I dealt with a lot of different things. Libraries. And there's nothing like this. There is nothing that I've seen that creates such a safe place that people will come back and they're not going to come back, they're sharing with their friends. But it's just. One thing, if I'm not there, I really, really rely on our community partners, the individuals, like Clackamas County specifically. That communication has to stay open so we can make sure that we're not losing people that have already been homeless for long enough. 4D, amazing, they also do outreach with us. They are in the library every week. So if people want treatment and they want avenues, we have avenues there. Community paramedics, which is a new grade addition. And Clackamas Fire Department, which is amazing also. Very willing, was in a meeting just now, but how can we get here to individuals that are on the street? So once again, make it to hospitals. That communication of that outreach meeting is amazing. It's fun to begin because there's like twelve different groups, including code enforcement, Sergeant Smith, just everybody that we can all share what's going on with an individual. We use a lot of privacy. We don't always use names, just a lot of code. We'll say our friend, just to keep that privacy. It's really important because that safety is, is what it is. The other part that that safety provides is an avenue for communication. Like, and the avenue, like a lot of people don't have phones or a lot of people can get to one place and if they can at least leave a message, it's going to get to one of us. Clackamas Service Center, always have to live with them. They're the other, not really a day center, but they're a resource center-ish, right? How you call it? Service center. So it's really nice that we have avenues, but the Father's Heart carries a huge, huge weight to that. So hopefully it's in a role soon.
MSU, one point, MSU is a mobile stabilization outreach unit with parole probation. One point I wanted to bring up is the success of that. It's supposed to have mentioned the other day that FTA has better, appears to decrease fifty percent since then. Which is amazing. That's that many more people. It is. And that, those kind of changes make a difference.
And you know what happens if you rack up a couple of FTAs? It becomes a felony. And if you have a felony, you know how hard it is to be housed.
Where was that first outreach, a spot that MSU did? Wasn't, wasn't it right here?
Yeah.
Like, let's do what's in.
Kelly's amazing.
And this is, this is a good example where Kelly is amazing. Because she fights and she fights for our folks, our city, whether people are housed or not. She definitely, I would, mama bears.
You can see the former teacher in you.
Yes.
I want to share a quick story, a couple of them. One of them via the day received a phone call from Glenn, said that he wanted me to be involved. And there was a call, the Milwaukee Police Department on, I'm not sure if it was a necessity or trying to keep somebody alive and he didn't survive and it was a threat. True. And one of the difficulties that was going to rise real quick is they shared a voucher, a third voucher. And they had been, they had been together for forty-six years. And according to like the VA, that's, it's a really long journey to get that done. Immediately, the Corvus Difif Fund, which is Brad Walters', Officer Brad Walters had started it. And it's a, it's a fund that helps veterans or their family in emergency cases. And they were able to pay the rent for them within a week with communication. And I went with her, gave her some avenues, she made some calls, she was able to get her voucher and the county gave her her voucher. So they made the adjustment for the amount and was able to give her a voucher. Another one, when I first came here, there's a gentleman, one of the officers said that he'd been in the city for about twenty years houseless. And they'd had a difficult time interacting with a gentleman and he's younger, he's under forty. And he wouldn't accept services. Like every once in a while, I'd meet him on the apartment and she'd not give him like a little bit of food, but that was like a little bit, he didn't really want to accept lots of. We did have that report. And I found out a little bit more than his sister, I found out I had guardianship. And I was like, okay, well, how can we use this? And it was still below the hospital. And what happened last winter was during our outreach, we checked on any camps as much as we can during even the weather camp. Where he was staying was in the Hudson Pass and he wasn't able to move. It was. He was, he would admit it through the day. Really glad that we were there, but again, Clackamas Fire Department, they were able to get him moved. And then we started this journey with Providence. And Providence has changed a lot. Now we're able to promote the fact that they're, they're changing and communicated with us that the times that Donald would be able to go back in. And like he was able to get out, got better, but he would still just keep going back to the hospital, not doing well. Able to get it connected to the court, raise her guardianship. And now he's housed and has been housed for almost six months at a mental health facility that's, it's actually not really locked down, but it's in Oregon City. So, and that only happened because of everybody being involved. Like getting support for Glenn, knowing where the police officer will have to find him or see him or give him a ride. And it takes that communication. Again, the library is a central hub for that communication. We have everybody else here. And.
I do want to do a quick fact check. We've got, I'll say ten minutes. If you want to finish the slides, one minute, maybe that'll even, it's nine minutes.
Hey, there are a lot of things and ways in which I'd invite you to look at these slides later. There are a number of ways that we are doing work that support these efforts. Yeah, I want the library to go to the next slide.
What is the Rittwell Lab?
Rittwell Lab.
So Rittwell is with Clackamas Housing Services. They provide every other week. It is a class, there is an intensive class, online course that folks have to take to get assistance for, for rent and/or to sometimes to even like to qualify. And if they take the class, they can get the assistance. But it's, it's very long. So they provide in-house labs at the library. They use the library computers that we got through a grant. And they, they average about four every, every other week. So, but it's getting more popular too.
It's a pretty intensive educational process. So folks also learn how to be good tenants.
And this is just our sort of numbers library specifically. So the Tuesday outreach that we talked about, in that year period, it's a hundred and three folks that have been served that we know about. There are probably other connections that sort of come out from it.
It's just on that one day.
And you're here many other days.
One day in a week, yes.
We distribute eight hundred and eighty-four bottles of water and bars. We also find that people respond well when we have something available for them. We also have a food bin that people just sort of give food and people just kind of take food. We kind of have a give and take bin in our vestibule. Tuesday outreach cards, which we have from here, everyone should have one in their wallet when you're out and about and you need someone, say, hey, come, come speak to these wonderful folks. We've given out sixty-nine of those at least. Parole and probation, the mobile outreach unit, two hundred and twenty-two people have been served. And some of those examples are people being housed directly out of that service. Pits is our incident reporting software. And it's really for us, communication tools. We talked about it's a great way to keep all of our partners engaged. And then finally, the Rittwell, there have been forty-seven people served since that program began. So it's, go on to things. And I think that's it for the, the library slides.
And that's just the card. Randy Little Group. And just a big thank you. It just, it is a team effort. When I first started here, the police and library, we're all the same team, but we didn't communicate a whole lot. We came down to the library when there was a call. But now if Brett has an issue, he can call myself, he can call Captain Cherokee and Captain Elkins and we can communicate.
Everyone on this side of the table, we all have each other's numbers.
We text.
Yeah. So, yeah. Yeah, just questions or?
I mean, you guys are fantastic, obviously. I really appreciate everything you do for the city, all of you. It's needed right now, especially. People are probably feeling extremely vulnerable. So having a support system is more critical now than I think ever before in our lifetimes at least. My question is with that, in regards to that, is there in, or is anything in danger of losing funding?
For Love One, most of our funding right now is through the SHS. So that is secure. A portion of our contracts that are outside of that would be like inclement weather.
A portion of our contracts that are outside of that would be like inclement weather shelter, which is funded through social services, which some of that is federal funding. I have not heard that that's at risk, but that is a piece of that. Oh, and something I didn't touch on is that we will be running the inclement weather shelter at St. John's this winter. So that will be a referral based site. That's not a walk-in. That's coming online in short order.
Did they figure out like capacity there?
I believe it's 20.
Okay, that's right. Yeah. Yes. And did the county come through on renovating the bathrooms?
Yep. That's, we have a, we have a meeting, like that's board.
Okay.
I think it's Monday. So the board has approved that.
And it's going to be an overflow? So it'll be like Father's Heart two?
Yeah. His Father's Heart can do 49. So we're up to 69 overnight for the entire county.
One more?
It's more than it was. Yeah.
I was not aware of the extravaganza. So is, is, do we see a need for this more or is it about what it was in the past? I'm just trying to understand what's going on here.
I would say it's been pretty consistent. We started about two years ago, I think, three, maybe three. It's been pretty consistent.
I think, I think in the middle to end of 22, we started with the extravaganzas. And you know, we've did some big ones. Clackamas Road over in the industrial area, which they just shut down and gated it off. But we cleaned that up multiple times. We did some behind Pepsi Court Mark along the river. Behind Les Schwabs in Oregon City multiple times. A few out here, one of our first ones in Milwaukee was right over there behind the, what's that natural area? Oh, Millwell. Millwell Natural Area, right at the end of the business in the storage unit place. So that was our very first one, I think, September of 2022.
Yeah. So I guess with your question, are you talking about like Milwaukee specific or just all over?
All over.
Yeah. Kind of depends. Like Glenn touched on areas that are prolific for camping and long-term encampments. Those we've had to do over and over and over again. The kind of one-offs have been really successful because the, the effort is go in, build relationships, connect people to resources, and schedule a time to come back and do cleanup. So really, it's, it's not just traffic. How do we bring the services to those folks? And then a lot of times they have like co-occurring things going on so we can elevate them in the process to get them into housing, sober living, something like that. To kind of really focus on that area and how we help get them moved on.
Or you're meeting them when they are with your services.
Yes.
I think in the last few months, we've seen an intensity of like. I don't, I don't know if it's true for every one of the partners, but I think in the library, we've seen like more high and like.
Mental health?
Yeah, sort of acute mental health incidents perhaps. Addiction, definitely like very short fuses right now.
Yes.
And then maybe just sort of the ether of the environment, but it's something we're seeing.
Is it that bad?
It's very fair. I would say part of it is, I mean, we're the, the, the trajectory of like fentanyl was introduced. We were seeing that effect and now it's like longer term high use and folks are not coming back from that. I would say that's a significant piece of it. But also anytime the weather shifts, there's behavioral increases.
The first beautiful day has started.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah.
I have another question. What, what are, what are some of the gaps that you're still experiencing? I don't mean like, you know, in, in getting somebody the services and I don't mean on the individual's board, like systemic. Like systemically, what are some of the barriers? Like how long does it take to get somebody into these services? I know, I know the county does pretty well with it. Well, I guess from what I've heard. At least on getting assessment. That's why we're here, right?
Yeah.
Figure that out. So, so please tell me like, what are some of the systemic barriers you're still running into that are, that you thought would, wouldn't be in the way at, at this far down the line?
For helping folks get into housing.
And anything, just services in general?
I'll just touch briefly and then.
Yeah, I can explain this.
Yeah. So I would say one is access to housing. So there were 1,065 Arla vouchers under the Metro funding. We filled those in no time. And we, I mean, community partners, not just us.
Right.
But those have been full and they're, and as people are either getting evicted and taken off those vouchers. Those vouchers are not being renewed or recycled or repurposed. So we've, we've reached SaaS goal on that. Our teams had to be super scrappy as far as what other housing options are available for folks who would be successful in independent living. Home forward just reopened their preference vouchers. But that is also a county specific. So if you want to house someone, really what matters, what you were touching on, is meeting people where they're at and finding out what their next steps are that they want. Because that's where the retention and success comes from. It's not, hey, I've got a spot for you. We're going to take this thing. It's where did you grow up? Where do you want to live? How can we help you be successful? So, you know, it's, it's that deeper thing. So I would say on one hand, it's also unrestricted funding to be creative, to be able to do those things. Another would be mental health needs and the ability to keep folks, like help them manage their medications and help them stay connected to those things. I mean, eyeglasses, dentures, medication.
That's huge.
Those things and IDs, those, we spend so much time trying to do that work to keep that stuff prepared. And then another is access to detox beds, treatment and recovery, especially in Clackamas County, is nearly impossible. So you might have five people who want to go to detox tonight, but can we get them in bed tomorrow morning at 7:00 AM? No. So those I think are the systemic things that I would.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, we're one of the worst in mental health in addition in the United States. We're number 50. I think we were 51.
I think we were 53.
Yeah, something like that. So, and then for housing, I mean, we're seeing, especially our 55 and older population, are hitting the streets faster for the first time ever in their lifetime. And we're about to see it unfold when the finances go up. If you look at 25% on stuff, food especially, they're going to hit the streets faster than you can imagine. When people are living paycheck to paycheck or people are living off of social security. You think the average social security is $731 a month? How can you live off of that? So then if you're struggling and now things are more, we're already seeing food prices are going up. And so people are trying to figure out how to survive that. The biggest thing for, for housing there is we do not have a shelter. We do not have the first step to housing first in Clackamas County. We don't have, we don't have a shelter. So literally you got to tell somebody, I think the closest thing to opening up for a shelter that we could give somebody to fairly easy if they're willing to go over by the boatyards is maybe like way out of their community. And 90, statistically, 95%, maybe 93% of the people you talk to in Clackamas are from Clackamas.
That's all, I mean, it is doing a little bit of both, but not.
It's not.
So I have ideas about shelter and I'm working on funding for that. And that would be like 25 to 50 beds, but also permanent supportive housing up top with some job placement, training down below, and co-located with treatment recovery services. So how and if and when we can pull that together, but that is absolutely something that I want to see come online in short order. There's a caring place coming online, which is co-located with the federal health centers. So we will have access to medication and medication management, doctors, regular care. We're working with Clackamas County to continue our care coordination, medical care coordination programming with Kaiser and Providence and Care Oregon and Health Share and a couple of other entities that are able to really like, if we bring, we do case conferencing by weekly. And, and if we bring someone on a Wednesday, a lot of times by Friday, there are solutions in place. So there's a lot of really exciting stuff that's happening. It's just also frustrating. It's not fast enough. And we can stare at the, the gaping holes all day, but also like, there's also a lot of really good stuff.
Clackamas Village.
Yep, Clackamas Village.
That'll be helpful too.
Yep, absolutely.
Thanks.
We should talk more.
Yeah. We're right about time, but I really do, you all three, Councilor Body copy. But if there's a way to connect with you all, it's the card right there. Love to reach out.
Thank you. Good to see you all. Yeah. Thank you so much.
And I just, before everyone goes. I just wanted to say that I'm now sitting on the Metro SHS table about, you know, the next steps with that measure. And there is going to be an audit of the three counties and the programs. So I would be interested in having a little bit more feedback from some of you, maybe one-on-one on that. We don't need to do that now, but I am interested in sort of that gap, finding that Counselor Coach Roby was pointing out. Yeah. So I'll just, I'll leave it at that. But thank you. For all the stuff you guys do. Amazing stuff.
Thank you.
Fantastic. You're keeping us on. Oh, don't let it go. Thanks.
Don't appreciate it.
Hey, sorry I didn't respond to your email. That wasn't me being scoffing at you.
Okay, so Brian is kicking me under the table all over the ground there.
Just had a scoff on the base. Probably get out of here on time.
I think we can actually breeze through a lot of it pretty quickly. Some of the detail you guys want to get into, legislative update for April 15th. Happy Tax Day. Happy Jackie Robinson Day for those who celebrate that.
Baby.
We passed a big, big deadline last week with the first deadline chamber revenue forecast is next. Second chamber reading and then 9:30. So a lot of these screens, we're down to just the ones that are still active. About 50, 60% of the original list of all the bills that we're contracting. Mostly that they're in light blue, they haven't really had, they've had something recently, but there's nothing as of this morning scheduled up coming up. So. And Mayor Beatty, I, my view of Zoom, I can't see your hands raised, so I'll try to pay attention to that.
I'll watch that for you.
SB 6, HB 3560, which we, a letter's been sent on, SB 473 and HB 3187. I've had recent activity, but nothing really going on. SB 580, HB 3170 and SB 916. I've had recent things going on. Energy affordability, quite a slew of, a little slate of those. HB 3081, HB 3179, HB 3336, 3546, the Power Act, 3917, Fair Energy Act, S. Centerville 88.
Before you move on Scott, it looks like Mayor Beatty's got to hand it up.
Well, and that was just to call you out, Council President. Because you and I have a letter on a couple of these that we need to, we need to finalize. Like we didn't get our letter together before the last hearing, but it's still, I think valuable to get the letter out to the, to the members. I noticed that Oregon CUB was asking for people to, you know, contact their members. So we do have a letter per our discussion, our council-wide discussion at the last meeting on this, but we haven't sent it to anyone.
I'll give it a look in the 30 minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, which bill you guys? I think we were talking about the Power Act came up again.
It was the Power Act and the Fair Energy Act. It was one bill that, one letter that addressed both.
And that was formatted, but you're just saying, Mayor Beatty, that wasn't sent to anybody?
Yeah, they were in two separate committees and we didn't clue into that until kind of late in the game. So our letter was addressed to one committee that didn't have the jurisdiction over both bills. And at this point, now that they're out of committee, we probably just, I think the Council President knows members that need some persuasion. And we probably just want to go to, you know, some targeted members. But I'm going to defer to his expertise on that for sure.
We could also, I know, that's not going to be a floor sheet each day for the reps to see what's coming up. The Power Act, I think, has been second read and is moving on to its third reading. And so if Representative Gamble wanted to publish our letter as a floor letter, it gets delivered to everyone's desk. And I think that might be a nice way to make sure everyone sees it. So we could reach out to his office and I could make sure we time it right so it gets on the right day. That would maybe be a nice way for people to actually read it as opposed to their staff reading.
Great. I like it.
Let me know if you need any help with that. I think the letter was, maybe you need to change the address. Anything else on this slate? A couple, just kind of spacing on the slides, SB 243 and HB 2411. Firearms and funding. And then the, the, the big list of bills, which as of this morning, I didn't see anything coming in the near future as scheduled. But 2138, 2258, 2698. There was a letter sent on that, right? 2846, 2906, 2968, 3031s, 3188, 3589, 3644 and 3746. I think last time we were confused as to what number the condo bill was, but I'm pretty sure I tracked it down to 3746.
A Y Shelter Program. Good.
It looks like these are still maybe have ways. Anything on the housing ones?
Combat liability, one slide here. Our representative voted yes in committee. There was only one no vote from Representative Hillsborough. So Mayor Beatty, if you're connected to Mayor Pace, Mayor Beach. The name's.
Oh, Hillsborough there? I think it's Beach.
Beach, okay. But if you have friends over in Hillsborough, you all know, to reach out to them would be helpful.
Beach is the first name.
I did not know that they had come down opposed. That's very interesting. That bill went to, does it go to Ways and Means? No.
This one goes to the floor.
It goes right to the floor. Okay. 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 The other one that's missing here, I think, is the, which, which I do believe is in Ways and Means, is the one for the funding for the scattered sites. It did come out of, it was Rep. Dobson's bill. It's to, you know, create the community land trust potential for the scattered, for about half of the scattered sites. It did pass out of committee and go to Ways and Means. Do we want to chime in with Ways and Means?
I think that'd be a good idea. Yeah. I like it for our Clackamas delegation to uplift as well. Maybe this would be a good opportunity for us to write a letter with all the other cities in Clackamas County. And so this is something, what about this? We're having a Metro meeting received for tomorrow morning. I could raise this as something that we could maybe all write a letter on tomorrow morning and see if we could get all our Clackamas folks like this. Thoughts there?
When does, when does the letter have to be in by? Is there a deadline for the?
Ways and Means, if you go back to the first slide, the revenue forecast on May 14, 15, 14, will really start the Ways and Means process because then we figure out how much money we have. So we have until then to write the letter.
Yeah, that's fine.
And we, has anyone said the number, bill number on that one?
It's 3503.
HB 3503?
I have it.
I'll have that noted as a potential letter.
Yeah. Great slide, Mayor Beatty. That was a good one. Other, your hands still up? Do you have more?
Uh, no.
Last call housing. Land use, SB 974, 29, HB 2950, SB 2138. Combat meetings, HB 3883. The mayor just added that one earlier this week, yesterday. Looks like that one had some activity yesterday. Couple of records, HB 2533 and SB 1077.
On that 3830, 3883, I went in and read the public comment. There were only like five comments and it's unclear what, I mean, it's, it's a bill that's, it's like a one-sentence bill that says, you know, public entities have to have. public entities have to have public, uh, open public comment at their meetings. Well, we obviously do that at our regular sessions, but the question for me was, does it mean at our work sessions too? Does it mean at our study sessions? What does it mean for our committees? Um, and from reading the comments uh, submitted by special districts, and I think there was one, Mollum County actually opposed it. It was the only letter in opposition. But all of the comments, whether in support or opposition, were pointing out that it's too vague and um, that there are questions to be resolved about, you know, committees and subcommittees and um, you know, the different kinds of committees that uh, entities have. So I don't know what's gonna happen with that one, but uh, it was flagged by MMC uh, yesterday, early this, in the thing I sent around early this week, uh, yesterday. Um, so Scott, all of these are still alive?
As far as I can tell, they've all, I I almost took some off, but then I went back and looked, and they've all had at least first readings.
Okay.
By that, by that deadline of last week. So and some of them had first readings like back in January and February. So they haven't had, some haven't had activity, but they have met that first deadline, so.
This one was twenty-three, SB twenty-one thirty-eight. Remind me which about, what that one's about. We sent a letter for that.
That one?
It's.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Go ahead. It's the latest governor's middle housing bill. Um, it's got a, uh, it's pretty extensive. It's got uh, some things we're already doing, some things we plan to do in our uh, housing production strategy, but it's also got some other things that have a number of cities still concerned. It's improved over the, it's had a dash six. Uh, so it's had uh, six iterations, six revisions. Um, and that's what passed out of committee. Um, I don't know if, I guess it's at Ways and Means, probably. Um, I haven't looked at the breakdown of the latest um, you know, provisions to have a real informed opinion about it.
I I had it at tw- it was twenty-three eighteen on my sheet, so that's why I was like, is this another? Flipped?
Nope.
This one, like, all high-level overview, biggest thing it does includes urban unincorporated areas and middle housing requirements. It makes some tweaks and definitions, so you can be a little bit more flexible on how you configure middle housing. Your cottage clusters could be attached, your duplexes could be stacked on top. It kind of is like the math of how you configure cottage clusters was a challenge. Um, and then it tries to make like some small technical tweaks to where townhomes can be built. It's it's a much more like needy bill and technical bill than her other middle housing bills. I think the two provisions that have caused some heartburn would have been amended to change. One is it removed traffic, traffic impact policies for middle housing. We don't require them for single-family homes. It said townhome, or middle housing is now our standard, so we should have our traffic studies reflect that. They tweeted to say, if you're building fifteen or more units, you need a traffic study. But anything less, you don't necessarily need a traffic impact study. Uh, and then the other thing it did is it, that's controversial, is it said middle housing codes can't be perverted by CCNRs. So if you have a wealthy neighborhood with HOA, they can't have a restrictive covenant that says we're not allowing middle housing. Uh, so those are, I would say, the two heartburn places. But the governor has stripped out a lot of the things that made the city oppose and has included about seven million in technical assistance.
She took down the overreach.
Well, I think, I think people could differ about that, but um, what about the tree code, Will?
Yep. So tree code there, she, I would have to go back and look. Um, there's a different bill that's more like Oregon homes is a little bit harder on the tree code. This one is, would not impact our tree code that much from my reading of it.
And what's the one where we, we have a negative impact on our tree code?
There's one bill, Oregon condos, oh, sorry, not Oregon condos, Oregon homes, that would create statewide templates for buildings. So you could have a pre-approved middle housing townhome that you could build in any, in specific lots in any city across Oregon. So it would cut down on permanent tab. Uh, but they like have different provisions to make sure it fits with the tree code, make sure it fits with certain, like, only on certain lots. There are different UO she's trying to throw at, and I think that one, making sure her tree code provisions aligns with our tree code is something to be.
That's still in, that's still in there.
That's not, this is a separate bill.
Oh, that's a separate bill. Oh.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, I think this one bears looking at for the tree code aspect as well, though.
Absolutely.
Um, at least last time, it's been a probably uh, a month since I looked at it, but last time I looked at it, it was still problematic.
I'll celebrate it.
Okay. Anything further on this deck? Uh, so this one, uh, there, there is actually some questions. First of all, uh, I thought we had HB twenty-twenty-five pegged, but I can't find that in the list, so does that transportation package have a number?
Uh, twenty-twenty-five, yeah. It hasn't been dropped yet. That will be the bill.
Okay.
Yep.
Just, it's not in the list yet.
There's been press outlining the expected elements, but the official bill isn't out, right? Yeah.
Twenty-sixty-three and thirty-one nineteen haven't had anything recently. Uh, the one that does have something coming up, or as of this morning, did, SB nine sixty-seven has a hearing tomorrow.
Uh, one small thing, check the governor's middle housing, Mayor Beatty, and she included in the dash six amendment something allowing her cities to tree code still, or like amended out of that concern. So that at least is good.
Okay.
And then there are two veterans' bills, twenty-five thirty-seven and thirty-four sixteen. So we'll keep watching for that transportation package and then anything else on this one? And then a couple more, uh, wages, twenty-sixty, twenty-six eighty-eight and HB twenty-eight oh three and thirty-six thirty-four for water issues. Nothing there. We did have, uh, just noted that, I guess we didn't send it, or it wasn't sent, but that one bill, the letter addressing the Fair and Power Acts was mentioned earlier. Uh, and then as of our last check-in, at least when I was there for two weeks ago, there was a letter being drafted for Fernberg Park picnic shelter support.
Yeah, that should have been in the packet for this week.
Oh.
That's the one I emailed on Friday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want to look at that together as a group?
Oh, yeah, yeah, at the, at the regular session.
Oh, later?
Yeah.
Okay. And then Mayor?
Okay, yeah, if you guys can email it around bef- during the break, that would be great, because I don't think I've seen that. Um.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then the Bridge Meadows letter that the mayor emailed yesterday.
Right. So that one I would like uh, us to discuss. I don't know if now or at the regular session, either way.
So maybe, Scott, you send us an email with both letters, and then everyone can review on our little break. And we can come back and we can talk about both of you, the council reports.
And if you could also think on something with all your free time in the next thirty minutes. Uh, council's scheduled to go to Grand Ron for a site visit on May thirteenth. Uh, if there's anything in particular you'd like to have on that agenda, uh, what we're setting up is for a midday, get the Grand Ron around midday. Uh, they're gonna provide a lunch, and then they may have some i- items to discuss if council, with their council tribal, uh, the tribal council of the city and the tribal council will have a joint meeting, uh, discuss whatever you want to talk about, and then it'll end with a um, visit to the Chasaloo Museum. Uh, so if you had any thoughts or ideas about what you'd like to see on that agenda, maybe think on it, let me know. Email me later. It'll be a week or two until we draft that agenda. Just wanted to put that.
And I do appreciate you adding the first fish herons to the CD report. I thought that was a great addition um, to the latest CD report to know what's going on there, so.
I'll I'll just say my colleagues in engineering have been, uh, Camilo in particular has been great at project managing that and our city engineer Jen too. So all kudos for that. Go to engineering.
Perfect. Um, with that, we return.
Maybe, Will?
Two minutes late. Auburn's back.
There, he's standing up.